We are back. And we are on item nine. Head Start, and so I will ask Mr. Boyer to give his report.
Put a little shine on this morning. Again, we are here at my favorite part of every board meeting. The Head Start report, if the board will indulge me once again, we do have a bit longer report this month, but I will begin with our traditional reporting items of funded enrollment and budget, and discuss with you and Dr. Faust some of the highlights for Head Start this month. If you could pull up the appendix. Very kind, thank you. Our funded enrollment is unchanged from last month. We are at 260 students. We have 73 three-year-olds. We have 126 four-year-olds. And a couple notes here. We are working on our quality improvement plan as mandated by the Department of Education, and we have some pretty good things to share with you. We were granted an extension of that due date until October 7th, 2020. Ms. Miles has updates available for you. You can certainly ask her, or if it is the will of the board, I will provide those to the board members so they can take a look at that and stay on top of that. Transportation safety training has begun to ensure we provide high-quality and safe transportation for our students. Dr. McCarty is providing required monthly training for staff serving as bus monitors as a part of our plan. Ongoing virtual meetings are scheduled on a weekly basis to check in on the progress of that training. Some of our highlights for the month. Face-to-face, social distance, meet-and-greet, and home visits have been completed. We have done a parent orientation video which was created and published to families via school website and social media. We had a visit by our new superintendent, Dr. Faust, and news media highlighting the family engagement of meet-and-greets and those parent orientations, so thank you very much, Dr. Faust. Open house video created for families, and this will be published closer to our Plan B start date so they can have a sense of what they will be doing when they come into our classrooms. We had classroom instructional pairs leading these open house videos, and they were shared via remote learning platforms. We started remote instruction on August 31st, and our remote check-ins were completed August 25th through 28th. And finally, ongoing recruitment and enrollment is taking place. Online, in-person applications are being accepted for the next school year already. And that concludes -- oh, I'm sorry, the budget. As you can see, we just started our fiscal year, so our percentages are still very low. I remind the board every month that we start at a different time, and we are in the rears. Ms. Miles is available to answer any questions about the budget or our in-kind contributions, if there are any. Okay, thank you. Item number two. So this is our -- this is just for information. This is a requirement, an annual requirement. The Head Start Community Report for the school year 2019-2020. The federal government mandates the following data to be reported to the community on an annual basis. Our enrollment, which we do every month, of 260 children. Last year, our Head Start program had 112-year-olds, 112 three-year-olds, and 148 four-year-olds. 134 males, 126 female. Seven of our students were homeless. They broke down via race by 148 black students, 95 white students, 11 multiracial students, six Indian and Alaskan students, 81 Hispanic students, 179 non-Hispanic students, and 31 were learning disabled. An average daily attendance for these students of 88 days. You can see on here, I won't go through every number, because I know we are interested in the clock, but funding for early childhood education was $2,033,847 for Head Start, and you can see our NC pre-K numbers as well. Title I funding came in at $865,000. Our county contributed $487,422, so we thank our commissioners for those contributions. And Smart Start kicked in $36,960. Any questions about that thus far? Excellent. And again, I won't go through every item. You can see here our leading budget expenditures for Head Start, where we spent our money, our administrative costs, what we spent for classroom personnel, health services, and again, this is part of our monthly report, but it's required to report to the community on an annual basis. Our skills and outcomes, independence and self-sufficiency, skill development, transition activities, literacy and language development. These are things that Ms. Miles and her team work on constantly. Our screening is very, very important. Healthy kids learn best. 100% medical exams, 100% of our dental exams, 100% of our developmental screenings, and 100% of hearing and vision, so all very important things in contributing to the success of our youngest learners. You can see our local partnerships with our elementary schools, high schools, universities, and community colleges, and private child care centers. Parent involvement included, workshops offered, and site meetings as needed. Policymakers for policy council. This is a requirement for Head Start. We have to have parents on our policy council. Professional development opportunities were given to our teachers and our administrators to include classroom appropriate practices, conscious discipline, classroom coaching by master teachers, and leadership in early childhood education. And kindergarten readiness, included creative curriculum, fifth edition, professional learning continuity, early collaborative learning teams. And I'll mention quickly our community partners. New Hanover County Health Development -- or Health Department, Mobile Dental Health Clinic, Coastal Horizon Mental Behavior Specialists, the county commissioners, of course, the Department of Social Services, Smart Start of New Hanover County, and New Hanover County Public Libraries. So obviously, you can see, we are extremely busy. We are extremely proud of the work we do, and we are delivering extremely good results for our youngest students and their families. Ms. Adams?
You said that this is available to our community. Where does this document live if the community was interested in it?
That is a very good question. Ms. Miles, can you answer that?
So could you please repeat that?
Sure, Ms. Miles. I was just curious. I know this document is available for our community, and where does the document live if someone was interested in finding this data?
Great question. So what we're going to do is after tonight's meeting, sometime tomorrow, we're going to post it on our New Hanover County Schools Early Childhood Education website. In addition, it will be on Johnson Pre-K Center website.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so moving on to our third and final item on this month's liaison report, the Head Start Annual Service Plan. We are requesting that the board, our governing board, approve this plan. Sort of a gray area on whether or not we have to, but we're going to. At least I ask that we do, because it's an important piece of the Head Start program to have a committed governing board behind us, and making sure that we're doing everything twice over with these programs is really important, because there's a lot of different funding sources. So these service plans, and I hope everybody had a chance to look at them. It is a 78-page document, so I'm not going to go over it. It was on the agenda and added up there. But these service plans map out how we provide services locally using our mandated Head Start Program performance standards as the foundation for what we do. We have added the language of virtual remote to a few areas. We have enhanced our health and safety components in this plan to reflect the practices being implemented from our quality improvement plan. And again, we ask the board's approval, and Ms. Miles can answer any questions about the particulars, if there are any.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would like -- are you making the motion, Mr. Boyer?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to move that the board pass the Head Start Annual Service Plan.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Boyer?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Robenbark?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passed at seven, nothing.
Madam Chair, this concludes the Head Start Liaison Report for the month of September. Dr. Faust, welcome on behalf of Head Start. We are really looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer, for that very thorough review. And Ms. Miles, thank you for what you and your staff do.
Our pleasure. Thank you very much.
All right, we are now on to the superintendent's report, so I will turn it over to Dr. Faust.
So good evening, everyone. I am glad to be the leader of your school district and looking forward to having more and more conversations around student achievement, Title IX, honest conversations, and safety and security. One of the first things that I definitely want us just to pay close attention to is safety, and I believe, you know, we do have to look at safety being first. Safety, just not looking at -- we want to look at safety from the health and wellness of students, and the safety and the health and wellness of our adults. I know we've had a lot of conversations around bringing our students back, and that it's not necessarily affecting the K5, the younger kids, but what we have to remember is that we do have adults in those buildings that are of those ages, and I'm not necessarily sure, and I do want to do a little more in-depth research on it. I'm not sure if we have enough substitutes if students, if teachers were to get sick and not able to come to school for X amount of days, or however many days they're supposed to be out. So those are some things, caveats, that we have to think about. We also have to think about, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Labor, Department of Labor. Back in around March, April, they sent out some guidelines for us, and we need to take a look at those to make sure that we adhere to those guidelines as we are doing so. The other ones, I do agree. I understand, I am a parent, trying to -- yesterday, I got the opportunity to sit in on class because I had to teach pre-algebra and, you know, remember what it was like. I've been out of the classroom since 2003, and pre-algebra looked a little different when I was doing it, and I was trying to help, and I was like, okay, we'll stop. And I was sitting in on a Spanish class, so I, as a parent, I understand your pain parents, and I definitely understand the students who I told one of my children that if you didn't pay attention, then I would get in the background and help you pay attention. And so it was like, don't do that in front of my friends. So I get all of those things. I get all of those things, and -- but what I really wanted to commend the teachers for doing is teaching in an environment where they have not done so before. And the students were actively engaged. The classes that I sat in on, I got to sit in at high school, and I got to sit in at middle school, which are both too hard grade levels to actually teach. The one thing that I do want us to do was to encourage everyone and let them know that we'll be focusing on Tier One instruction. So what is Tier One instruction? That's that first-time teach, making sure that we provide quality instruction the first time that we give it. The second part about what we can do with a lot of our teaching, it's we've got to do some, a little bit of professional development around what do small groups and breakouts look like. One of the teachers I must commend, I won't call the teacher's name, but they did a great job of having the students reread, and then the teacher gave them 10 minutes or 15 minutes to go out, and then they had to come back in, and then they went back to more like a small group, and the teacher was able to talk with them. To add a little bit of icing to that, I think we can start to look at what do small groups look like? How do you teach a small group? How do you, as a teacher, instead of roaming the classroom, how do you roam through virtual learning? And there are ways to do that, and I think we just need to tap into that and help our teachers do it to become more comfortable in what they're teaching, because the instruction is going across. It is going across. I do believe that there are some students who may need some additional support, and so we can help them with that. We've got to definitely look at the why and the how we're teaching it versus the what we're teaching. Those are some things that, and I have an article that I'll send out to individuals. I've just got to get my things unpacked, and that helps us. But I honestly, I am an advocate, and again, like I say, I want our kids to be back in school, but we can't make a recommendation. I can't make a recommendation tonight. And I just want to, on the behalf of educators, that's what we are. We're educators. We're not medical practitioners. And I said this before, I've said it since COVID has come out, is that we're putting educators in between a hard, a rock and a hard spot to actually tell people about science and science, medical, making that medical decision. So I do want to push our medical friends in helping us make those decisions, and, you know, sitting down and talking with our medical director for the county, and sharing our anxiety and helping them make that decision, because as educators, we don't want to get it wrong. That's the thing. We don't want to get it wrong. Mom, dad, grandma, aunts, uncles, we want to teach your children, we want them to be in a safe learning environment where it's healthy. And teachers, we want you to be in a safe, bus drivers, food nutrition, certified, non-certified, we want you to be in a place where you can also be safe. But we want to make sure that we are not doing something or moving with haste, and we're not ready. So again, we will be examining, looking. We promised the first grading period, and that's what we'll do. We'll be looking at those and taking some hard looks at what it looks like, and getting back with those surveys to make sure that we are able to reduce what we stated we will be able to reduce. And so, again, I have other notes, but those are notes for, I'll follow up with our team with those notes. But I, again, want to thank you all for just your warm welcome, and all of the emails that have been coming through, and the Twitter. And I do read the Twitter when I get a chance. I do read them all, and I try to like as many. I try, tonight, I have on one of my masks, and I'm fine as long as I'm not talking. It doesn't rise up, so it's not that I'm trying to do anything, but the mask is, it kind of rides up and down. So again, I just want to thank New Hanover County for just the warm, I'll say that the southern hospitality, because that's what it has really been. So again, just excited, and thank you for welcoming my family and myself.
So we are on to the Board Chairperson's report, and I will keep my remarks brief. I just want to reiterate again, are welcome, and to say thank you for being here, Dr. Faust. We are really glad to have you. We are glad to get started in this new direction that we are going to be taking, and we are glad to do it together. So again, welcome, and we're going to be moving. I know. As, it is obvious I am going to be stepping aside as Board Chair. I'll talk about that further down the line, but I really wanted to keep my remarks to just an overall welcome, because that is the most important thing. So, thank you. Moving on to item 12, committee reports. Are there any committee reports? I don't think we've had any committee meetings lately. Item 13, consensus items. Item A, Personnel Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. And you can see, my report is brief. I am here on behalf of the administration to ask you to consider a motion to approve the Personnel Report that has been submitted, unless there are additional questions.
Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
Move for approval. Mr. Boyer?
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Any discussion?
Ms. Estep?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passed at seven, nothing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Benton. Item 14, old business. Item A, Policies for Second Reading. Ms. Nichols?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we get started, Ms. Stagner, can we review all 15 of them and then vote for them as a group to save time, unless there's?
They can be voted on as a group unless there are any that need to be pulled out and reviewed or amended before adoption.
Okay, thank you. So we will start with Policy 2200, and I apologize, Mr. Wartman, this was the first one on here, and I had forgotten it was. Electing officers, organizations, board. And you can see where it says, if the chairperson or vice-chairperson resigns from office, the position will be filled at the next regular board meeting, meeting of the board. So I hope that answers your question, but...
So yes, can we have Ms. Stagner address that at this time? So Ms. Stagner, can you please address that question and talk about the election, item I? In relation to item I?
So I must admit, this is a bit of an unusual circumstance to have the policy that's governing an item on the agenda to be changed in the middle of the meeting. But I would also point the board's attention to your policy development, adoption, and review policies. You've got two of those, one new one on the agenda tonight as well, that talks about the effective date of the policy, but also indicates that the policy has to be recorded in the minutes of the board meeting in order for the policy to be considered the official board policy. So just to back up a step and give the board the overview, the statute requires, North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(41) requires the board to have an organizational meeting and elect new officers, chair and vice-chair, 60, no more than 60 days after the election of new board members. The board then has a policy that gives more detail on how officers will be elected. But those policies are not a limitation on the board's authority to elect officers. So in other words, even though your policy says that you will hold elections at a certain time, and you will elect officers for a term of one year, that doesn't mean that the board could not decide within that period of time to elect new officers. So the board ultimately has the authority to determine when and how it will elect officers, again, aside from that mandatory meeting that you have after a new election of a new board. There's certainly some ambiguity, given that you are changing policies. If this policy is adopted tonight, but I think that under either the old policy or the new policy for election of board officers, I interpret that will be filled at the next board meeting to be a statement not of limitation or waiting, but a statement that it is urgent for the board to fill that vacancy promptly. And so that the vacancy, the board chair position should not be left open or vacant for a period of time. The existing policy says that upon resignation, the board shall meet and elect a new chair. This one says that the position will be filled at the next regular board meeting. I think underlying both of those policies is an understanding that most of the time that office will be vacated in between meetings, and so there's a mandate there to fill the position promptly. I don't read it as requiring a waiting period, so to speak. So if the board chair steps down at this meeting and a new election is held, I think that's fully within the board's authority to do so. Again, it has to be a majority of the board, and the board's will is what will prevail. So I'm happy to answer any questions. This is a bit, again, of an unusual circumstance, and I don't think there's a case or something that's directly on point to give guidance, but if the board adopts this new policy tonight, I don't think that prevents an election of a new chair at the end of the meeting, if that's where the board goes.
So any?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, Ms. Stagner, the first question I would ask is, being a lawyer as well as I, the new policy that we're approving is very clear. It's not open to interpretation. I mean, it clearly states the position will be filled at the next regular board meeting. From a legal perspective, should clear words be open to interpretation, or courts, because courts will look at the four corners of a document and determine exactly what they say. There is no ambiguity in the fact that it says, "will be elected at the next regular board meeting," so, meeting of the board. So I'm a little confused how you're interpreting something different when it is very clear what is in that policy. And I understand that, and let me, just to be clear, and to have everyone open here, I am sure that the three people that have been planning this for a month and have been going behind everyone's back, talking about this, took the five-minute break to consult with you. That is accurate, correct, Ms. Stagner?
I did not consult with anyone during the break, Mr. Wartman. I will say to you that the policy says also in the first paragraph that it will be held as often thereafter as the board determines appropriate. But again, number one, this policy has not yet been adopted. The board does not have to adopt this policy tonight. Number two, if the board adopts the policy and feels that it requires the board to wait until the next meeting, then certainly there does not have to be an election for a new board chair this evening, and it can wait until the next one.
Right. Or the board chair can simply resign prior to the next board meeting, which is probably what should have happened, and still have waited to this point to resign, correct? She could resign in the middle of the, in the middle, in between board meetings, and then the next regular board meeting would be the next time we meet to vote on a new chairperson, correct?
That could occur as well.
Ms. Stagner, if we simply pulled this policy and operated under the current board policy, would that clear up any ambiguity?
If this board, if this policy is not adopted tonight, that would certainly help to clarify some of the ambiguity. The existing policy says that in the event the chairperson resigns, is removed, or no longer qualified to serve, the board shall meet and elect a new chairperson.
So could I make a motion, then, to just pull Policy 2200 until next month? Would that, could I make that motion?
I think that certainly a motion is in order if the chair would accept that motion. Again, the policies can be voted on as a whole, or they can be voted on individually, or some can be pulled.
So, Mr. Boyer, is that your motion?
Madam Chair, I would move to pull Policy 2200, and... Madam Chair, I would move to pull policy twenty-two hundred and hold it till next month.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
Positive.
Go ahead.
I'll go first, Judy. I think that it is extremely ironic that you have the three people who have been going behind everyone's back for the last two years make the motion to pull a policy, especially when Nelson was actually one of the people that actually helped write the policy, because he's on the policy committee. The fact of the matter is, y'all three have been doing this for a month, going behind everyone else's back. Unfortunately, Nelson didn't realize what he was doing with the policy that was being presented today. When he found out that that policy could potentially prohibit us electing a new chairman, they tried to pull a policy. This is exactly the problem with this board. You're continuing to go behind the back of the public, do things in secret, which you just got called out on, and now you're trying to figure a way to cover yourself. And doing this is the exact thing to try to cover yourself. So, I'm glad we're having this discussion.
I am too, Mr. Wartman, because I believe that our legal counsel just told you that she did not have any discussion when we took a break. We all went to the bathroom, I'm not sure what you were doing.
I didn't.
We also didn't plan this for a month. And I also would like to say, for the record, that you and I have had several conversations about both of us stepping aside when the time comes. And when I had that conversation with you last week, you declined. So, I am honoring what I said I was going to do. I did not plan this, I did not plan this three weeks out, I did not plan this at all. And I'm really sorry that you're trying to jerk this sideways. I think this is in the best interest of the board.
Ever, you told me that you talked starting about this three weeks ago. Don't tell me you just didn't start doing it, you left a voicemail for me at four thirty.
I left a voicemail, and you called me right back.
You're exactly right, right before the agenda meeting. But don't say you haven't tried to plan this, because you actually told me you had already talked to Nelson and Stephanie about this, three weeks.
I did, because I knew how the conversation was going to go with you. But you also, are you saying that you never talked to me about this before? That we never had a conversation about this before?
I demanded your resignation a year ago.
Are you, you didn't demand anything, are you saying you never volunteered to step aside when I did?
I one hundred percent, one year ago, demanded your resignation.
You said, you said, you did, we did have that conversation.
Absolutely, I did, because I did not think you were an effective leader.
Okay, great. I'd rate back at you.
Can I now say something, or did you want to say something, Bill?
No, no, go ahead, Judy.
Okay, this is sad. We keep doing this in public in ways, it's an embarrassment. We need to do things in public completely, not behind the scenes. This is a good policy, the new one. I like it because that gives the public a month to give feedback for the new chair. It's not just a matter of the seven of us working together, it's the whole darned community. And this self-serving behavior, behind the back, and I know for a fact, weeks ago, this was discussed with you, Lisa, and other people on the board, not me, of course, not me, but that's okay. But now we have an opportunity to do it right. We should pass this policy, wait a month, and then, after the public has contacted board members about how they feel about what's best we're going ahead in the future. We've had a really rough twenty-one months. We need to start responding to the public so they can trust us, not do things behind people's backs. And we're only sixty-one days from an election. We're going to have a new, naturally anyway, board chair the month after. This makes no sense, because you, Lisa, have more experience than anyone else, working with the superintendent, because, a superintendent, because of that, you could be the most assistance to Dr. Faust since he's new here. So, the next two months would be very vital to him to have that kind of support. This makes no sense. And the first time it was proposed to me last week, I was told it was because there's four people on the board that's going to stay, this is what you told me. And that it would be best for Dr. Faust to work with one of them. Well, the thing is, now, today, suddenly it's wide open, there's seven of us. We could elect David chair. So, that makes no sense, your explanation last week makes no sense, this behavior makes no sense. I'm not going to try to figure out what's going on in your minds to think that this is good for our board or good for our community. We need to step back, pass this policy, do it, if you want it, if you're that desperate to step back the last two months, go ahead. But go ahead and give us the opportunity to have the public speak to us and us to ourselves, each other. I haven't talked to Jeanette about this, I haven't talked to Bill about this. I've only talked to David, because he was a shock, he got the same message about the same time I did. And you guys have known about this about three weeks.
Judy, you also talked to me, you called me in a panic the other night about this.
Because you left a message, it's crazy. This is not the way we should be conducting business behind people's backs.
Ms. Justice, this is Stephanie Adams, I didn't call you, you called me.
Yeah, because I did talk to you about exactly what I just said now, none of this makes sense. We need to be responsible to the public. This behind-the-scenes maneuvering is one of the reasons the public is so distrustful of this board. We've got a pandemic, we have the possibility of having six students, six staff, a community that's got so much riding on what we do with our kids, jobs at stake, and you want to talk about this? I am really disappointed in your focus. I'm ready to vote and move on, you are exactly right, we have way too, we're talking about three months of a transition. Where Ms. Eastep will be able to provide all the wonderful guidance that we're talking about, but then what? Because Mr. Wartman and Ms. Eastep are not going to be here. We need to have somebody in place to work with the new superintendent, who is going to maintain a role on the board. That is not politics, that is practicality. That's backpedaling, that's not what Lisa said today, that's what she said last week. This changing its stories does no good for this district. You have some self-serving motives, and I'm not sure what they are.
I haven't even talked about it yet, so I would like to be able to talk about it when we get to it. So, if you don't mind, if we can call the question, so we can take the vote and see where we are.
I have one question before we call the question, if y'all don't mind. There's already a news article that's quoting Nelson as talking about this. So, I'm a little confused how, we haven't even had the discussion, yet we're talking about ethics on the board and talking to the media. And Nelson has already been quoted by WECT about, we're going to elect a chairman at a later date. That, to me, doesn't, I'm a little confused why a board member would even talk about it when we haven't even talked about it, much less give that information.
Somebody asked me if, after Ms. Eastep made an announcement, somebody said, hey, are you having a vote on chair? And I said, I don't know.
That's not what they said.
That's not what they quoted you on.
Is it, Nelson, maybe, at some point, maybe it's possible, maybe not to try to talk to the media all the time and have a discussion with the board first?
Yeah, well, it was announced, I just said, yeah, that was the announcement.
It was not announced, at a later date, no, sir.
I don't know what a later date means, I never said anything about a later date.
So, WECT was wrong when they quoted you, when you're saying that in an election, we would discuss electing a new chairman at a later date, I just want to be...
After Ms. Eastep said, we are going, that she was going to step down, somebody asked if that was true, and I said, that's the plan right now. I said, there's going to be a discussion.
I guess they missed, you're saying they misquoted you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
I would just like to welcome Dr. Faust to the New Hanover County Board of Education. Congratulations, welcome to North Carolina.
All right, I would like to call the question and ask Ms. Bullier to take the vote.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wartman?
No.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Oh.
Jeanette Nichols?
No.
And Bill Robenbark?
Yes.
By my count, the motion passes four-three. So, that policy is pulled until next month. Ms. Nichols, please proceed.
Thank you. Policy twenty-two-twenty, official school spokesperson. And that's one that's very essential that we are familiar with. Shouldn't have any concern about who's speaking on behalf of the board. We have no questions or comments, we'll move on. Twenty-three-hundred, board meetings. Talks about the types of meetings that we have, official meetings. Our next policy, twenty-three-ten, public participation at board meetings. And again, we worked very carefully to ensure that the public is always welcome to address the board or to send us any information they feel pertinent that we need. Policy twenty-three-twenty, compliance with the open meetings law. And this is one that we've worked very careful with Mrs. Stagner to ensure that we are following and are compliant with all our policies as well as the law. Our next policy, twenty-three-twenty-one, closed sessions. And again, this is a very elaborated policy. And we appreciate the guidance that we've received from Ms. Stagner as to ensure that we are on topic when we are in closed session. Our next policy, twenty-three-twenty-five, board meeting news coverage. And this, again, is helpful to our media so that they know how we work together to ensure that the information is out for the public. Our next policy, twenty-three-thirty, board meeting agenda. There aren't any major changes here, it's just that we want to ensure that we are consistent with our agenda format. Our next policy is twenty-three-thirty-five, advanced delivery of meeting materials. So, we have an extra day of being able to review all the materials. Policy twenty-three-forty, parliamentary procedures. And again, we follow the Robert's Rules of Order, the newly revised version. Policy twenty-three-forty-one, addresses a quorum. Policy twenty-three-forty-two is a new policy on voting methods. Policy twenty-four-hundred, board policies. And this is one that Mrs. Stagner was referring to as far as the developing and revising, revision of policies. Policy twenty-four-ten, policy development, adoption, and review. And the last policy for your consideration, policy twenty-four-thirty, dissemination and preservation of policies. Madam Chair, with the vote already in place for policy twenty-two-hundred, I ask that we approve the presented policies for second reading.
All right, you heard the recommendation, so is there a motion to approve all of the policies with the exception of twenty-two-hundred?
Move to approve, Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second, Bill Robenbark.
Thank you, Mr. Robenbark, any discussion? Ms. Bullier?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Robenbark?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven, nothing? Is that all, Ms. Nichols?
Yes, thank you very much.
Excuse me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item fifteen, new business, item A, transition services contract between NCSBA and New Hanover County Schools. That is my name after it. This is something that we had in Dr. Faust's contract, so all board members should be familiar with it. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would like, ask for a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Move for approval?
Motion to approve, Bill Robenbark.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robenbark, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bullier.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bullier?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Robenbark?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven, nothing? Item B, AT&amp;T hotspots, Ms. Brinson?
Yes, thank you. The board approved in August a contract with AT&amp;T for service on up to fifteen-hundred-and-fifty hotspots that New Hanover County Schools purchased in the spring. The filtering that the initial offer provided was not sufficient for the district, and as a result, the cost for filtering has increased from one dollar a month per device to six dollars and fifty cents a month per device. This change increases the contract cost by approximately twenty-five percent to five-hundred-seven-thousand-five-hundred-one dollars. So, bringing it back because of the percentage of increase and recommending that the board, I guess, ratification of the final contract with the increased cost is requested.
What was the increase in cost? What, what, what was the increase in cost, Bill?
The filtering. By law, we are required to filter any device or internet access we provide for students. And the initial filtering that was only one dollar was actually a system that we would be on with businesses and other companies and school systems within that, that contract with AT&amp;T. So, if they had more lenient regulations, that would affect what our kids would have access to. And so, it would be kind of, we would want something blocked, they could possibly, somebody else could possibly unblock it. They could want something blocked, then we'd unblock it, and we just didn't feel like that was a good solution for our students.
Okay, I understand.
Are there any other questions? All right, hearing none, I would ask for a motion to, I guess it's to ratify the amended contract as presented.
Move to ratify, Ms. Adams?
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bullier.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman? Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice? Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-nothing, thank you. Item C, budget amendments, Ms. Mall?
Thank you, I'm presenting budget amendments for state, general, capital outlay, and other restricted revenue funds. And ask for your approval, just to summarize, we've received thirteen amendments so far to the state budget. Mainly for adjustments from planning to actual carryover and then the additional coronavirus relief fund grants we talked about earlier. In addition, in general, capital outlay and other restricted revenue, we were carrying over appropriations from the prior year for ongoing projects and grants. And then the additional fund balance, we mentioned, it says two and a half percent, that's supposed to be three and a half percent, to, to offset the anticipated state reduction in revenue, but also to address the technology needs we've discussed in the past. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about any of these amendments.
Are there any questions?
Nope.
All right, I would ask for a motion to approve the budget amendments as request, as presented.
Motion to approve. Bill Rabinbark.
Second, Mr. Bullier.
All right, thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven-nothing, thank you, Ms. Mall. Item D, NC pre-K subcontract for private sites, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two. Dr. Smith?
Yes, good evening again. New Hanover County School serves as the contracting agency for the North Carolina pre-K contract for the county. And what we're asking for this evening is for the Board to approve those contracts that we have with our private agency. So, we administer the grant and we contract those services through the private agency so that we reimburse for services. So, we're asking for the Board to approve.
All right, thank you, are there any questions about these contracts? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the contracts as presented.
Move for approval, Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-nothing.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith, you have the next one, the memorandum of understanding with EverFi?
Yes, EverFi is a nonprofit educational organization that provides K-12 digital resources to our students and also professional development to our teachers. The training that's provided, the opportunities provided to students around life skills as well as financial literacy. And so, we're asking for the Board to approve an MOU with, with EverFi so that there would be greater ease of access. Teachers would be able to have their students sync with EverFi through the use of PowerSchool. So, asking for the Board's approval.
All right, is there a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Bullier.
There a second?
A second, the motion, Mrs. Nichols.
There's a motion and a second. What kind of information will be shared with EverFi?
So, what allows it to do is through PowerSchool, we can sync students, and so they can automatically populate into teachers' classrooms. What teachers are having to do now is to go in and manually do that. And so, this will provide greater ease of access with, for our teachers. And this was, this MOU was reviewed by our Board Attorney.
I'm just curious too, it's great that there's no costs. I went on the website actually the other day just to kind of see what some of the offerings were, and I'm just curious, is it always going to be free?
It always has been.
Okay.
And so, I could not imagine the organization doing anything different, it is prevalent throughout the state. It is core in some of our classrooms in terms of their curriculum, and I think our teachers would be at a loss if we did not have this access.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so there's a motion and a second on the table, are there, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark? Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Thank you.
My dogs are barking, I have to turn it off.
Yeah, mine too.
Motion passes seven-nothing, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Item F, MOU with New Hanover County Schools, Coastal Horizons, and New Hanover County Health Department. Did I say Ms. Barnum? I'm sorry, I don't think I did, Ms. Barnum.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take it anyway if that's okay. Considering the time. Thank you again. This MOU between New Hanover County Schools, Coastal Horizons, and New Hanover County Public Health Department is providing the agreement regarding Lake Forest Academy and our medical response services, including medication administration, emergency action plans, and other medical responses that school nurses through the Public Health Department would provide. And I'm just asking for your approval on this, there is no dollar amount or fiscal implication.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, is there any, any, are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the MOU?
Move to approve, Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman? Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
And Bill Rabinbark?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-nothing. Item G, MOU with UNCW for student interns, Ms. Barnum?
Yes, thank you. This MOU is specifically for supporting student interns in social work or athletic training. It actually goes into a few other areas as well, such as school nursing. And it basically is to provide support for student interns or participants outside of the Watson College Agreement that we have in our PDS or Professional Development System. And currently, we are requesting specifically for student interns in social work and athletic training. And there are, again, no fiscal implications, and I ask that you consider approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to the, to approve the MOU as presented?
Move for approval, Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Bill Rabinbark.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
And Bill Rabinbark?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-nothing. Item H, contractual agreement for remote learning facilities, Ms. Barnum?
Yes, thank you. This one is gonna be a little bit different because it's not a specific agreement with a specific community partner. So, I wanna take just a moment to explain what a remote learning facility can be. Basically, there have, there has been an opportunity through community partnerships for school districts to create a relationship or a partnership with a community agency in providing a remote learning facility during school closure. And the, the plan here, which Deborah Stagner and her team at Tharrington Smith have provided us with some support on this, the, the document itself as a remote learning facility agreement with our, our school district would be what we are asking for approval. And then asking that, that we approve this form of agreement for all qualified entities and then delegate to the superintendent the authority to enter into agreement with specific partners, such as community partnerships such as church organizations or nonprofit organizations that are working to support students during remote learning times. Those, those organizations will be able to access local, state, and federal funds during the pandemic if we enter into agreements with them. And so, there's no fiscal implication for us, but we certainly want to engage in this partnership so that we can provide some instructional support, some collaboration around our learning management systems, and mainly provide for our community and these organizations an opportunity for our kids to have a safe place to be. This is different than licensed childcare facilities. This gives some of our community partners, and I don't wanna name any of them because I don't wanna leave any out, this gives some of our community partners who support kids after school the opportunity to serve them more than four hours a day and, and to work around the state licensure. And so, the request would be, again, that you approve the generic form of agreement. And then, the request would be that it would be delegated to the superintendent the authority to enter into a specific agreement with community partners that choose to, to cooperate with us.
All right, thank you, are there any questions?
I think it's a great idea, the only, the only concern I have is just about it being a little vague. Number two, where it says school system responsibilities, the system agrees to collaborate with the provider to facilitate the enrollment of school system students in the program. Are, are we advocating for specific programs with whom we're partnered?
No, so, there, there's a coalition of community partners that have come together, and we have been problem solving with them over the last couple of months on how to support students and maintain safety. And I do have a little list here of some that are working with us, but in order not to leave any out, and I don't want to necessarily publicize those because it's not our entity. They are, they have worked with us on, for example, network security, they've worked with us on learning more about our learning management systems. I know that staff in Ms. Brinson's division have been involved. I know that Dr. Smith has been involved, and then Kristen Jackson in student support has been involved. And we've been collaborating with these organizations. But we are not referring children to those. They are entities that have already been providing supports to students, they just wanna be able to do it for more hours in the day. Did that answer your question?
It did.
Okay. Again, we're doing things that we've never done before.
Has this, has this opportunity been offered to all providers or just the ones that have come to the system and said they've wanted to partner?
Right, so we're not necessarily bringing this partnership to them, we're, we're just, anyone that, that, that comes to us saying, hey, we wanna tap into some funding, and we know that we need a relationship with you, can we have a relationship with you? And if they are a qualified entity, meaning they meet these requirements such as network security, such as background checks, that kind of thing, the, in, just like, you know, the, the liability insurance, all the things that we would do anyway for either volunteers, level-two volunteers, or staff, then we would partner with them.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the contractual amendment for remote learning facilities.
Move to approve, Mr. Bullier.
Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark? Mr. Rabinbark?
I'm having a problem with my meat button, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion passes seven-nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item I, election of new board chair. I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this. I do want to briefly explain why I'm doing this and why now. To Ms. Justice's point, my reasons are the same as I gave you, Ms. Justice. In December, there will be an election. There will be three, possibly four, new board members. And there will be a lot of change at that time. I would like to see some continuity of communication develop between the superintendent and a, a board member starting now. I think somebody else can serve as chair for the next few months, and I can serve in a supporting role. I would like to see, I think a transition now would be good for the Board, because there are a lot of changes to come, good changes. And so, it seems very logical for me to step aside and allow that change to happen. These are the reasons I gave every board member that I talked to, these are the reasons I gave Dr. Faust, and these are the reasons that I gave Dr. Burns when I talked to him about it. So, I hope everyone can understand that. This is, I'm doing this in the best interest of the Board as I see it. I would like to help one of the board members that is, are continuing on, is continuing on to get that experience of being chair. This does not mean that the new Board will not hold elections in December, they will. And whether or not the person that is chair the next three months is chair starting in December, they might be chair, they might be also a support for that next new chair, I don't know. I don't know. But to me, this feels like the right thing to do. It's been an honor being a chair, and I think it's going to be an honor for the next person. So I will be working with Dr. Faust for the next three months, and I, I welcome that. And I welcome, like I said, being a support for the person who serves for the next three months. So with that, I am stepping aside, and I will ask for the election. I will officially turn the gavel over to Dr. Faust.
According to Policy 1232, if the board chair resigns, there will be an election for a new chairperson. Do I hear nomination for the office of board chair? As a reminder, nominations do not require a second.
I, I would nominate Judy Justice for chair.
I nominate Stephanie Adams.
Are there any additional nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. Those in favor of Judy Justice as board chair say?
I'd like to have some discussion about each of the candidates.
If you do it in alphabetical order.
Okay. Oh, okay. Those in favor of Stephanie Adams?
I'm sorry, Doc, if are we, are we not having, just to be clear, we are not having any discussion about candidates?
Ms. Stagner, do we normally have discussions?
We don't normally resign, the, the chair doesn't try to put who she wants on the, the chair, so I think?
I think you just tried to put who you wanted. I don't recall during Cape Verde Community College that we had discussions in between nominations, I could be wrong.
We absolutely, you made a motion and a second, we had discussions.
This is a motion and a second.
The, the typical procedure would be for a call for nominations and, and then voting in, on the, voting on the nominations in the order they were nominated. There's certainly nothing that would prohibit the board from having discussion.
It'd be good for the community. I can see right now there's an awful lot of disappointed people, not sure what is going on, and it would be responsible to them to let them know this is the form of democracy we've got going on right now with this board.
Ms. Stagner, I, I would say, I mean, obviously, our chairperson feels it's her duty to put who she thinks will carry on her legacy as a chairperson, but what I would say is maybe just give each of the candidates an opportunity to explain why they may be good board members or be better than the other person, without having any other discussion, at least allow the two board members, the two nominees to speak. Does that make sense?
I, I would not have any reason to say that, that that could not be part of the procedure.
Well, then I would like, I would like, unless there's an objection, I would like to hear from both of the nominees.
Well, since Ms. Justice was nominated first, why don't we let her go?
With me, if it's an agreement, I will go ahead. We need to care first and foremost about our children, our edu, their education and their safety. It's been obvious in the last 21 months that I have been consistently focused on that, and as a result, we are here where we are now because other people apparently have not been. I bring to this table the most experience in education and in this district in all areas. I have been honest, I have been consistent, as I said, I care about the kids. I have worked with everybody on this board, and I do believe I've got good working relationships at this point with four of them, because over time, we have learned that we need to listen to each other, and we need to accept when we're making mistakes. Because if we don't, the community will definitely call us out on it. Now, we have had some people that continually do things behind the curtain, if you want to call it, that has led to this embarrassment. And I'm going to be honest, one of them is Ms. Adams. She's the one that called that, or put together that press conference that she literally, or they tried, the people that showed up tried to hold behind our backs. I just got there at the last minute, thank goodness, but it was embarrassment. But that's only one of many things that have gone on in the last 21 months. She needs to learn more about being in a position of serving the people as a representative. We don't need to be creating things behind the scenes for reasons I don't know half the time that leads to confusion and doesn't address what's really important. Right now, what's really important is the pandemic. What's really important is our kids' education. Dr. Faust would be well-served with any of us. You know, and, and the point is that we are having an election, this is like usurping the public voter by doing it in this manner. They're going to vote for people to be on this board in 61 days, and then a month later, we're going to have a reorganization. We can wait until then. Continuity, any three of the people that are put on there could be the new chair. All of us that are still on the board now, myself, Ms. Adams, Mr. Boyer, Mr. Robbinbark, we all need to work with Dr. Faust. None of us should be given special relationships or knowledge, we should all be assisting him with our knowledge, what we're hearing from the people. This is what the people want, they want us to conduct things transparently, they want to hold us accountable, which they are in 61 days. And to do this now, I see no purpose except for something that literally is going on behind the scenes that I can't fathom, because for one thing, I have not been politically privy to this behavior that's been going on now with certain members of this board, sadly, for 21 months. We're supposed to be responding to the voters for our kids. This is, you know, I would do that as chair, definitely. Transparency, transparency, I can't say the word, it's a little late, accountability, and actually fairness, and nothing behind the scenes. I'm tired of this, and the whole, the whole county is. I guess I'm done, Ms. Adams.
All right, so I thank you, Ms. Justice, for your comments. I will say that the request was that we share why we think we should be chair, and I think that this is one thing that I stand for as a leader, is that I don't bash, and you took it upon yourself, in an opportunity to talk about yourself, to talk poorly about others. And that's not what I'm going to do. I'm going to tell the people in this room and the people sitting up here why, first off, I've humbled and honored that Ms. Eastep views me as an optional person, or the, the optimal person for this position right now. This position's not easy. I have watched her work tirelessly for this community since she came in, to very unfair and sideways commentary. I feel that this role is incredibly important, and a leader is somebody that collaborates, and a leader is somebody that, that is, listens and is being a part of the community. Since I've been on this board, I've served on the EDI Committee, and Dr. Smith, I'm sure could attest to it, I have attended over 20 meetings over the past year since it's started. I attended the Color of Education Conference, I have attended Saturday morning creed conferences with other educators in our district to push forward racial equity in our schools. That is verifiable data that I am a part of these conversations. I am the current chair of the Family Communications Committee. We have gone out, we have recruited community voices, parent voices, school system voices, and the things that we have done on the, the Family Communications Committee over the past year have actually brought about improvements for our families. It is verifiable, there are updates that have happened to our websites, and it is open communication. I was on the Educator of the Year Committee. That was 30-plus hours of interviews, applications, welcoming our educators of the years, and it's one of my favorite days of the year, and I wouldn't give it up for anything. CTEC, Mr. Wartman was assigned to the CTEC Advisory Board, and he didn't participate, but because I am a CTE advocate, I was going to those meetings, and I was attending, I was seeing what was going on in that school to offer a voice. I have visited over 20 schools in our county since I started in this role. I am working every day for this community, the kids in this community matter to me. I stop and talk to anyone that wants to share their opinion. Oftentimes, you hear, it's hard to get to all these emails, especially when we have something very large going on. I try and respond to as many of those as possible, and I've seen many emails that have come back saying, Ms. Adams was the only person that I've gotten a response from, thank you. People have come up to me in events and said that. Leadership is so much more than a title. I have worked in HR, I have on-boarded hundreds of people. Dr. Faust has an incredibly important role, he is leading this district, he is the next chapter for New Hanover County Schools, and he is going to need support. Does that mean that I know everything about the district? No, I don't claim to be, like Ms. Justice does, I'm not the expert. What I do is I surround myself with people that are strong, that are smart, and can give the answers that need to be had. And I'm also going to learn from Dr. Faust in this role, because he has a lot of experience to bring to the table as well that he wants to share with the district. So I don't believe that this role is something, as Ms. Eastep said, when the board turns over in December, it's going to look completely different. We are talking about possibly four new people, and that's going to be a challenge, we're going to have to start over, but I'm excited for that challenge. And whether or not I would get to be chair again, who knows? What I know right now is we have three months, and we have three months to start something new and amazing and wonderful here in New Hanover County, building on the great things that we have. And I think that I am the best person on this board that is going to bring people together, not separate them and try and run a false narrative about what is going on in this district, because I'm always going to be positive, and I'm always going to acknowledge the gaps that we have. Ms. Justice brought up the press, the press conference, you know what? That was a disaster. But that's the difference between the kind of leader I am versus the kind of leader others are. I owned it, and I said it was a mistake, and it wasn't done well, and it really was a crazy day. There is nothing nefarious in what I do, there's nothing behind the scenes that I'm going to do, and I really wish people would stop saying there's something nefarious about anybody else on this board. The two that are sitting up here, whose names are getting dragged through the dirt tonight, Ms. Eastep does what's best for the school system, she puts the school system first always, that's what I've learned over the past few years. We don't always agree, and we're on opposite sides of the political table, but she always puts the district first. And that's important as a leader, and that's something that I think that I want to be able to bring to this position, to be able to be the collaborative person that brings the group together in very traumatic and crazy times as we navigate a pandemic, we navigate a new superintendent, which is wonderful, but it's tumultuous times, right, it's transition. And I think that I have what it takes to be chair for the next three months. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Those in favor of Judy Justice as board chair, say aye when your name is called. Those opposed, say no.
Lisa Eastep?
No.
Nelson Boyer?
No.
Stephanie Adams?
No.
David Wartman?
Stephanie, it took you 45 seconds after you told me you weren't going to bash anyone to bash someone, and you didn't mention anything about educating students. Other than that, I, I hope that you, you do, I know I'm going to lose this vote. I'm going to vote for Judy. Stephanie, I hope that when you are chair, educating students is, is top of, of your list, because that, you never even mentioned that, and that's a little disappointing to me.
Judy Justice?
Owee, aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
No.
And Bill Robbinbark?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams is elected board chair.
Mr., Dr. Faust, you'll need to call for a vote on Stephanie Adams.
Okay, sorry.
She, she may not get a majority either, so we have to go through the votes.
Okay. Those in favor of Stephanie Adams as board chair, say aye when your name is called, those opposed, say no.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wartman?
No.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Boyer?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
And Bill Robbinbark?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams is elected board chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so does that mean we're moving on?
You are moving on.
All right, we are moving to correspondence, does anyone have any correspondence they would like to share?
Just very briefly, piggybacking on something you said, I do want to thank the chair. She's, she's been really, she's been a strong leader, and I served in Afghanistan, and I think that I would, I would take you over any leader I had over there, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
I, I would say the same thing, but I would also like to thank again, Dawn, Julie, and LaShawn, because I know that y'all are working 24 hours a day trying to figure out how we're going to do everything we're going to do, and, and it's not going to stop. Nobody thanks you, but I do, I appreciate what you do, and just thank you.
Anyone else? All right, next item, announcements. The Policy Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 9:00 AM, here in the BOE Center. The Family Communications Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, September 10th, 2020, at 5:00 PM, here in the BOE Center. The Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee will meet on Monday, September 14th, 2020, at 5:00 PM in the Board of Education Center. The New Hanover County Board of Education will hold an interim meeting on Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, at 5:30 in the BOE Center. Do I need to read this part as well? Attendance will be strictly limited to no more than 10 people, which is recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The general public will have the option to view remotely via live streaming on Roku, Apple TV, and online at NHCS TV. All right, do we have a need for a closed session?
We do not.
We do not. All right, if that is the case, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjournment, Mr. Boyer.
Is there a second?
Second, Ms. Eastep.
Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Robbinbark?
Aye.
Hey, Crystal?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way we could do the, that in reverse every now and then where I was first?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, just for a measure.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll take care of that, Mr. Robbinbark.
The vote is seven oh, we are adjourned.